To order. Please take a moment for silent prayer or reflection. Martha Jo, would you like to give the roll call?
Nicole Cohen?
Here.
Archiana Aliar?
Yes.
John Maston?
Here.
Lisa Ramon?
Here.
And Kathy Cox?
Here. Saying to the flag of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have a call to the public, and I need to let you know that according to Arizona Statute 38-431.01, that this time is reserved for items that are not on the agenda. There will be a five-minute time limit, and because of the restrictions according to Arizona Statute, the Board may not respond, or discuss, or take action on a call to the public. So Doug, would you come up and please state your full name?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Hey, my name is Doug Bishop, and this is about what the schools need. And I don't care what else you say about it, but they do need them. First off, as counselors, recommended from the National Counseling Association is 250 students per counselor. At the high school level, you have about 450 for each one of them. That means you need at least two more. On the elementary level, you need six. Because you have six elementary schools. It doesn't make any difference which one you do, but I'd suggest you go to the high school first. I would also suggest that you only get three at the elementary level. They are needed, period. It's you folks' job to get them into the school. Second, you also need more teachers. When you have thirty, over thirty kids per class, that's ridiculous. When you have special ed classes and there's seventeen to twenty, twenty-four in a classroom, that's not a special ed classroom. That's it, basically. Now, how are you going to get it done? You're going to have to talk to the legislature, or you're going to have to raise taxes. And I think you folks know how to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is recognition of visitors, and Carol, are you here? I see you back there. For LHCA. Think every time I come up, it's different. I just pushed it on.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the Board, Superintendent Desire, and Directors. For many, spring break was spent relaxing and recouping, but as for the Association, it was spent time, was time was spent catching up on some bills that are going through, as well as reaching out to our legislators. As bills pass from the House to the Senate, and from the Senate to the House, currently, this week, discussed in the House Education Committee, was Senate Bill 1468. It was a suicide prevention training bill, and it's for sixth through 12th grade. I reached out to both Representative Cobb's and Biesucci during the Education Committee, and asked them, almost on the lines of like Mr. Bishop stated, as a sixth-grade teacher at an elementary with no counselors, this is something that's needed. And so unfortunately, it is currently going through as an unfunded mandate, but before voting, Representative Cobb's did ask that the bill be discussed in appropriations. So both Cobb's and Biesucci did vote yes, and they're looking to find some appropriations for this specific bill before it goes to the floor. Senate Bill 1256 is the procurement, practice, and auditors. This may be one, as the governing board and directors, you may want to follow up on. The discussion Monday night was around whether or not to put term limits on our auditors, or, and whether or not to let the low bid be the final bid. If this is something you feel you have a strong opinion on, then I encourage you to reach out to both representatives before it goes to the floor. Senate Bill 1070, which is the evaluation bill for both teachers and principals. It is, it has been amended to include charters. Originally, it didn't include the charters, and it is now including the charters. Last year, this bill ran as House Bill 2187, and it left the House 57-0 passing, but unfortunately, it didn't make it through the Senate. Now Senator Boyer, formerly Representative Boyer, pushed it through the Senate this year. He shared studies on the floor, I mean, on the floor and in the Education Committee on how the current system produces negative versus positive effects. Senator Boyer's initial request was to make this a zero percent evaluation, that the evaluation is based on data, but knowing in order to get it passed, he probably needed to do the 20 to 33 percent. So this bill currently has gone through education, has gone through the Senate and the House, and it is one we support, and it is putting the regulation down to 20 to 33 percent versus 33 to 50 percent of the teacher and principal evaluation based on quantitative data. And then one last bill that was brought to my attention over spring break was House Bill 2425, the school tax credit. Contributing to which opens up this debt, the contributions, and this bill will open up the definition of capital. It is over to the Senate. If you support or have concerns with the definition, you may want to reach out to Senator Borelli before it hits the floor. As we all would love to see funding for education to increase, locally, we know tax credits are a great asset to LHUSD. So until the funding formula is updated to the 21st century, and/or the district additional assistance fund is fully funded, this bill can be helpful for us at LHUSD. Any questions?
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Some.
Second.
Martha Jo.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
John Maston?
Yes.
Archiana Aliar?
Yes.
And Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Own business, the first item is Mrs. Esteban.
Madam President and Governing Board, it is recommended the Board approve the second presentation of revised policy regulation, ECAA, R Security. The Governing Board approved the bid to expand video surveillance across the nine campus locations on January 15, 2019. The security policy needs to be updated in order to conform to current technology use, provide clear procedures for cameras and video use, ensure access for law enforcement and first responders in emergency situations, and state limitations to comply with all applicable law. Pending approval of this regulations, exhibits will be developed to support LHUSD's security protocol. This regulation has been reviewed by legal. No changes have been made to this policy since the first reading on February 19, 2019.
I move that we approve 5.1 as presented.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I just have one question on page four. Under video records may be released to third parties or applicants, and I just want to clarify that I know what that means. So that means third parties, the law enforcement, would be considered a third party, and then applicants would be anybody involved in a videotaping that had requested it.
And we are, we're not looking to release to those parties. We're looking to develop that they would watch it with us, there'd be viewing records, but the third parties would be in like all matters.
Okay. Thank you.
Martha Jo?
John Maston?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes.
Archiana Aliar?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes. Good evening, Mrs. Esteban.
Madam President and Governing Board, it is recommended that the Governing Board approve the second presentation of revised policy exhibit, GCVCE, Professional Staff Supplemental Pay Plans. This exhibit has not been updated for several years. Many of the extracurricular activities that were listed are no longer offered and have been renewed. This update conforms with activities currently being offered at LHUSD's school sites. In addition, changes are recommended for the payment structure. Percentages were changed to dollar amounts for accuracy in budgeting and payment. As the base level teacher's salary has changed over time, budgeting for stipends have become more difficult. This revision allows with how other schools across the state list their stipend amounts. National Board Certification stipends were originally authorized by the Governing Board for the life of the certificate, and were cut to three years as a cost-saving measure. During the time, National Board stipends were cut back. Educational advancement was not granted either. Salary advancement for outside professional development in college coursework has been reinstated for staff. LHUSD supports accomplished teaching, therefore, National Board stipends should be for the life of the certificate, which is currently five years, and then must be renewed. LHUSD has had a number of special education positions open for more than two years. There are a number of teachers in general education classrooms with special education certificates who have chosen not to utilize their certificate. Special education teachers have the extra demands of IAP meetings, goal development, and case management services. This stipend is needed in order to attract and retain special educators and work toward ensuring that special education students have qualified teachers teaching them. This has been reviewed by legal. There have been no changes to this policy since the first reading, February 19, 2019.
I move that we approve 5.2 as presented.
Second. Any discussion?
Only to be redundant from the work session, but since we're adding back in the stipends for National Board certified teachers, was it discussed what that could look like, you know, five years down the road if we had, we had a large participation for our school size? So, you know, have we looked at that in terms of the budget, what that would cost us? I mean, that was a consideration, I assume.
Yes, thank you. So in the discussion, we talked about the fact that we have information each year on how many teachers are approaching that, and so we have the opportunity to budget for that in prior year.
Okay.
Okay. Martha Jo?
Archiana Aliar?
Yes.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
John Maston?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
And with new business, item 6.1, Mr. Murray.
Madam President, members of the Board, it is recommended the Governing Board award the bid for Food Service Management Company, Tawher Incorporated, for the 2019-2020 school year, with four annual renewals possible thereafter. On April 8, 2014, the district's governing board awarded the bid for Food Service Management Services to Tawher Incorporated, and that contract was valid for a maximum of five years and will expire at the end of the 2018-19 school year. The governing board determined on November 20, 2018, that it was appropriate to use the Request for Proposal, RFP, process for Food Service Management Company rather than competitive sealed bids. On January 7, 2019, after review and approval by the Arizona Department of Education, an RFP was emailed to the food service vendors on the district's bidders list, and the RFP was also posted on the district website. Food Service Management Company proposals were due to the district office by 2:00 p.m. on February 21, 2019. Four food service management companies submitted proposals. They were Tawher, SFE, Aramark, and Sharpwells. The proposals were reviewed and evaluated by a committee comprised of myself, Patty Basir, procurement specialist, and Ann Tafe, who's a child nutrition supervisor. The proposals were evaluated according to the criteria as stated in the RFP. After the evaluations were completed, the contract that received the highest total number of points was submitted to the Arizona Department of Education for final approval. The proposal and the evaluation sheets were forwarded to the Arizona Department of Education on Thursday, March 7, 2019, and then pending approval by the Arizona Department of Education and the governing board, the offer and award form and certificate of independent price determination form will be signed and submitted to ADE. And as contained in your backup, there's an update. We did receive a letter dated March 13 of the approval of the award from ADE. And the ADE approval and provision of the selected vendor to the board was received, and all documentation was forwarded to...
Do we have a motion?
Right.
To make a motion, we approve 6.1 as presented.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Well, I have a question. Ann, would you please say the name of T-A-H-E-R, because I hear it mispronounced. Probably I was, as much as I hear your last name, mispronounced, so you could straighten that out. Both of those first right now. And leaving from this moment on, we will all say the name correctly.
I tell this story a lot. We'll start with me first. My last name's Tafe. It's Irish. It looks like taffy, but my mom said we weren't sweet enough. And it's Tawher Incorporated.
Say that again.
Tawher.
Tawher.
Yes.
Everyone say Tawher. See? You can do it. From now on, all right. I think we're ready to vote. Martha Jo.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
John Maston?
Yes.
Archiana Aliar?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Item 6.2, Mr. Becker.
Madam President, members of the Board, it is recommended the Governing Board approve the use of parchment to deliver official transcripts to colleges and universities electronically. The rationale being several issues arise with transcripts, which are currently provided by the registrar at LHHS. Official transcript requests are dependent upon the availability of staff and time to process them, and upon the number of requests received. There is no system for tracking which requests have been processed or received by the requister or the institution. Students who need transcripts on short notice are currently dependent on the availability of the registrar to print, process, and mail the transcripts. With the new system, students can order official transcripts anytime, and a staff can send electronically, saving days for the university to receive. Moving to this service will provide a more streamlined procedure for processing official transcripts and ensuring a well-documented delivery to the requested school. Most of the responsibility for ordering and requesting transcripts will be the students, and they can order them at any time. Although most of the responsibility is with the student, it is the school's responsibility to upload and send the transcript to the requested colleges and universities. Turnaround time is much quicker, and as noted, delivery gets documented. Students would be charged through parchment and processing fees for this service as follows: $5 for current students, $7.50 for students in the one to four years post-graduation, and $10 for five-plus years post-graduations. The PowerPoint presentation that shows the transcript process from ordering, delivery, to payment was electronically sent to the Board for review. Current students would be able to access unofficial transcripts through the registrar at no charge. An official transcript will be provided to any students applying to the community scholarship, and all students will receive one free official transcript upon graduation available in June. The contract has been sent to legal for review.
And before, there's no motion. If I may add a couple of clarifying points from the Board discussion and questions that I received. In the contact, on the page, right, at the top of the page, the, nothing is checked, because when it's an electronic contract, so as soon as you start checking boxes, you're beginning to execute it. But this is a learner pay, so this is not a charge to the district. And at the bottom are the three areas that we would be looking at. It would be transcripts, enrollment verification, and graduation verification. So those are the only three areas of records that we're looking at. And then a question was asked about charging, because we are charging more than what the company charges for that. And the reason that we are charging more, I did find this out, Mr. Becker could clarify, is that we typically get transcript requests from alumni up to about five years after graduation, not a lot after that. And so the extra dollars would pay for the service of uploading, processing, and converting and uploading those alumni transcripts, so that they could also be accessed by alumni. Does that answer it?
Sure.
Thank you.
I think a motion that we postpone this until next month, if possible, and I'd be happy to explain why in discussion.
Can we ask?
I'll second that.
We have a motion on the floor, and it's open now for discussion. I would like to ask Mr. Becker, how does that affect your schedule? Or does that have, is this going into next year?
It won't delay anything.
Okay.
Because they will be coming out to provide the training and such.
Okay.
So, I mean, really honestly, looking at that timepiece, even if it passed tonight, by May, this is not going to be in place. We have so much other, so many other things going on between now and graduation that it would take quite a bit of time.
Okay.
Away from the counseling office, we're preparing students in classes next year and creating master schedules and getting towards graduation. So this would be a summer training anyways.
Okay. Mrs. Cohen, if you want to, am I right?
Well, I won't go into, I won't take up the whole time, but I am happy that you're so proactive, that this isn't a time crunch, so appreciate that, because a lot of things are a time crunch. So it's good that this isn't. My first question is, how much is this costiness? What is the cost per student, or however that is generated, even though we're not paying for it?
So with the, when you look at the, let's see, one, two, third paragraph down where it breaks down the student payments, parchment charge is a $3.50 fee for a transcript being produced, and then they give you, as the owner, if we're the owner, to set a payment schedule. So if we wanted to go back and archive the transcripts from past years, up to about five years, there's a cost to come with that. And instead of taxing the district with that cost, that we pass that on to the student at that time. I can tell you from stepping out of the principal role and into a parent role, because I have a current senior who we are going through the application process to me, and I know I'm in a different situation financially than some people, but I'm by no means filthy rich. What we're paying for applications to go to schools, this $5 is minimal. When you're paying $80 just to apply to the school, then $350 once you're accepted and say, yes, I'm going to EdU or wherever.
And then I wanted to have this discussion, because this is the first time that we've done this, and correct me, anybody if I'm wrong, that we've asked our students to go into a consumer area. And that's why I wanted to have this discussion, because we've done a lot of tech in the schools without going through the Board. So this is the first time that we're doing something like this, and there was so many things that I wanted for us to consider, especially what our students are going to be asked to agree to. So that's why I sent Mrs. Desire, and I'm sure that she probably sent it to Mr. Becker.
Yes.
I don't want to, were you going to say something?
We had provided additional copies. I think that we have some copies also for interested, if there's anybody in the audience interested in the additional documentation that was provided before.
And so, since it's not a problem with the timing, and if the rest of the Board has questions, I'd be happy to hash out everything here, or I'd be happy to sit down and go through it in a meeting and then highlight things, ask questions at the next meeting. What I'm hoping is that the representative would be able to participate if we postponed it.
Yes. I've already, with the questions that have been asked of, that John had asked of Mrs. Desire, I forwarded communication to John today to be able to communicate his questions. Mrs. Desire needed to be aware of your concerns as well.
Okay.
And asked me if I could be able to have that person either here in person, or because they do operate out of meetings, have them telephonically. Or the third option would also be to have a, not a full work session, but to have members of the Board sit through the presentation. Mr. Maston sat through that presentation with us before, and the individual would be willing to do that as well.
And I did ask my question, and I did get an answer. Mrs. Cohen specifically, at the last meeting, one of her big concerns was monetization. And so I asked the monetization question. I said, the question is, does parchment monetize any student data, including passwords, even in a way that would not identify the student? If so, how is this done? His answer was that they never monetize that data. And I find that answer interesting, because when I look at the end-user policy, there's a do not track section on the second full page, where it says some internet browsers may be configured to send do not track signals to the online services they visit, who currently do not respond to do not track signals. So they can actually gather browsing history information based on that. There's no way for you to opt out of them gathering that. The other thing I found interesting, is other information entered. It says, we also collect other information not sourced from your credentials. So they're collecting credential information, including test scores, which may be collected if you choose to use certain admissions tools available through the site. So we're actually asking our students to opt into something where data is collected. Now, data is collected, if they're collecting this data, even in a basic statistical way, at some level, it would seem logical that they would monetize it, or have the ability to monetize it down the road. And so, based on his answer, based on reading this, I don't see these two things as concurring very well. And so that raises a concern for me.
And honestly, when I started attending the meetings before I ran for the school board, this was the exact reason that I started attending the meetings, was the data portion, the data collection through Common Core. And I had presented the prior Board and the prior superintendent with some testimony, which I think, I know it was shared with the Board. And there are loopholes, because everybody wants to reference FERPA and COPA and PPR-A and all these supposed protections for our students and their data, but the fact is, is that none of them have kept pace with technology, and there's loopholes in all of them. And we're seeing our kids' data being exploited. I mean, there's multiple websites where you can track the data breaches and the information that's been stolen. So anybody who has gone through having just a credit card that's been stolen understands how difficult that is. I know, I was, in my research in the past two days, I hadn't realized that Congress is actually looking to act now. They've got, the EU acted on sleeping data privacy. California acted for, they made a huge data privacy law that doesn't take effect till 2020. But people are finally realizing that in everything data and the Internet of Things, this has to be a priority. So I just wanted to make sure that we went through this process real, kind of methodically, and answered those outstanding questions that have never been answered, really, at a Board level in the district for tech, so. But I understand, you know, how easy it would be to do that. It's easier to do a lot of things until it's not, until all of a sudden you're on the front page of the paper, and all your student data has been compromised and hacked, and things that we didn't even realize were possible are now possible.
Well, and I don't, I don't think that you're necessarily hearing no. It's just, what we're doing is, is we're sending our students at a very young age, and realize that the opt-out is if you're under 13. Once you hit 13 in this contractual relationship, once your information is up there, you can lobby to correct it, but you can't attract it at the age of 13. So you're asking students as young as 13 years old, So you're asking students as young as 13 years old, if they participated in this at some level, to understand what's in that end user license agreement and agree to that, and understand that for the ease and convenience of getting the transcript to college, that they are trading this much of their background or privacy away in order to get that ease and convenience. I'm not sure that most adults read an end user license agreement, let alone a 13-year-old, 14-year-old, or even 18-year-old student. And that's a, that's a concern as well. So I think it's incumbent on us, because we're going to use a third party, this is a marketplace product. This is not, this is not us sending the transcript, this is us using a third party for a fee in the marketplace with an individual signing up to send it. And when we enter that arena, where we bring in outside vendor to do that, and those fees exchange, we're representing the product to the public, and I think it's incumbent on us to make sure that this is right, right.
Do students have the option to not use this service at all, to not even have their information uploaded to parchment at all?
At the time, I mean, they do have the free official transcript, so unless students crossing that stage, and still in the month of June, they have not decided, and they want to send official transcripts to multiple places, then they would have to go through this, or use this product. If they had it narrowed down to, I'm going to the U of A, and I'm going to finally send them my official transcript, they could utilize that one that they get in June, and then send it to the U of A and through the mail. One of the other reasons, and it had to do with the second paragraph, is year after year, we do get blasted at the high school, which is behind the scenes, and it's not on the front page of the paper. And it happened this year, that a college on the East Coast said they did not receive a student transcript. We got multiple phone calls, we sent it three times. It's in the mail somewhere, it's sitting in a mailroom somewhere, because that is taken care of on any given day at the high school. It gets processed in the main office, it sits in the outgoing mail, where our post service comes in there every day and wraps that in, and it leaves our school.
And again, I don't, I don't see this as a no, I see this as, let's make sure this is-
I understand.
...the absolute right product, and before we have someone sign away their data privacy at a young age, let's make sure that all the protections are in place, and that we get the good and right answers from the vendor.
So, in understanding though, for Mrs. Ramon's question, what I believe is that the student does not have the option on whether their information is uploaded, because it would be a batch upload. What the student option would be is they would not have to utilize the service. And from my understanding, and I'll, since I know Mrs. Cohen has read a lot more of this, you can correct me, that the major risk occurs when the student signs in and decides to use the service. So the protections on the side of where our data is are actually pretty good. And I know earlier when Mr. Maston was a part of that conversation, their software and their protections are very, very strong. But the risk does come in then when the student starts to access, because that's when their data becomes accessible. So could you just clarify a little bit what you were on, thanks?
Yes, thank you.
Any other discussion?
I have-
Oh, go ahead.
I have one more thing, Mrs. Cohen, and I just want to say that I do appreciate the vigilance for protecting the kids' privacy, because I do think that it's just a very important thing to do. But you did email through Mrs. Sire, a article from Fordham University, where a person was testifying in front of Congress about this issue. And he had some critical things to say about the shortcomings of FERPA and some of the other protections that protect privacy. The part that stood out to me, though, and it's on page four, paragraph two, but it says, thus, under federal law, legal protection for student privacy will come only from the contractual terms and agreements between schools and vendors. So that does put the pressure on us to make sure that written into the contract, there are confidentiality protections. And I do see that in this contract, and it has been reviewed by legal, which does give me some assurance that we've done our due diligence to make sure that student privacy is protected.
The only problem with that is, is that legal is reviewing to make sure that we're complying with what we need to do. They're not reviewing it to make sure that our children's data is safe, so that would be the first thing I would say. The second thing that concerns me in the contract is that they refer to FERPA repeatedly, and FERPA doesn't cover vendors. So that's a concern for me too, because that's almost like, I mean, that's like giving you a false sense of security. You know, we're referring to a federal law that doesn't apply. And the third thing that I would say, and Mrs. Sire already said it, it's not on our end, it's not us uploading this batch of all ninth through 12th graders, it's as soon as they register. As soon as they register, and I don't know if you've gone to the site-
Okay.
Okay, if you go to the site, it's not just the transcript site. This site is massive, and it's going to continue to grow, and there is so much to do on that site. And so that's why the privacy policy for the student was so important for me to make sure that everybody had, because, again, our students, I don't think, even if we had our brightest student here read the Terms of Use and the Privacy Policy, that they would even understand, because it took me forever just to get clear in our contract that we're the member as the district, you know, the authorized user is an employee that you give permission to, that the credentialed owner is the student. I mean, there's so much lingo in all those contracts, and we certainly haven't taught our students how to read those contracts, and we're all guilty of checking the Terms and Services. Let me move on, let me just get to what I need to do. But at some point, we have to have that discussion, just because of the way everything's going, and I can't think of a better time than this, especially if it's not tight since the moment. So, and then the other last thing that I want to point out is that this particular vendor has not subscribed to the Student Privacy pledge, and has not subscribed to the Data Privacy Policies, which is a concern for me. I would think any vendor that is dealing with student data in a K-12 setting would be all over that, as in an effort to provide an additional, you know, assurance that we're going to protect your student data. So again, most of my concern happens with the student end, once they register. So, if they don't register and they don't use the site, then I think the risk is really minimal. If they register, they have just opened themselves up, I think the count was like over 15 that I just noticed, of different vendors that they could use resources and click and use, and they stay right in the policy, or in the privacy policy, you have to go read their Terms of Services and their privacy policy for each one, so. And this is it. This is the biggest business there is in the world right now, is student data. Everybody wants it, so.
Okay. To be clear, Mrs. Cohen-
Yes.
-your motion was to postpone item 6.2 until the May agenda, is that what you said, the May agenda?
Well, I said April, but I'm happy to go till May.
April agenda.
I would prefer it April.
Okay.
April, well, I guess, I guess you would. Okay, I'm glad I clarified that. All right. So, no more, Mrs. Cox?
Do you want me to pull the question name?
State your name for the record.
Hi, I'm Marsha Cox. I have two questions. I also went to the website, and I had a question on the privacy policy. There was information that we get from others, they said that they could also obtain information from other sources and include it. So basically, creating a profile on each student, and then also the monetization, although they clearly said they would not, then in the next section, it says that they would develop new products based on all of the information that they gather, on what we would provide through that, you know, accepting their policies and then the information that they gather from other sources, to create and develop new products, so that was an issue. And then also this, you know, being able to leak to other sources, and they have the right to modify their privacy policy at any time, so if you don't check it, and as soon as it's posted on the website, it says in their privacy policy, as soon as it's posted, it's immediately effective. So if you don't check it and opt out, you are under the terms of the new privacy policy. So if you don't agree with it, that's too bad. The other thing, and the other question I have is basically a standard one. I'm in a medical billing and coding, and I work with providers all the time, and we're obligated to protect all the information that we send to, what would the end user be, or the receiver be, an unsecure email? And so my information has to be encrypted when it comes from my email to the recipient. And we use Outlook Exchange, and I think that's the service that the district uses as well. And so my Outlook Exchange has, I have the ability to encrypt my email, so that it goes from my email to a Gmail account, so to speak, and so everything that's embedded in that email is encrypted. So is that something that we could consider? And it's, I mean, my cost to that is minimal, and so I save that folder on my server, and so wouldn't that be something that the district could do? And then once that goes to the, to the district student, it's their responsibility, because now they have that transcript in a PDF. Isn't that something we could do? Because then they get a return receipt, they have to sign acknowledging they received my email, and now it's their responsibility to keep that file.
The, the information that I got from the vendor, and I was in the October meeting on this, and that was the question I asked, is how are, how are you encrypting?
Well, I'm talking about taking parchment out of the picture completely.
Well-
What I'm saying is, if it came from an administrative email address from the school district, why couldn't we just send the information directly to the student's email address?
One of, one of the things is, is that you're getting into a more and more electronic world. In other words, it's not a PDF that can forward, it's a direct electronic transfer of information. So you have to have a system that then plugs into the college system. And so you're go, send it, and it goes electronically, and it's now at the college receptacle point, which is then automatically transferred into your file on their, on those computers.
Okay, so I-
And all, and all of that takes place, including our upload at 256-bit AES encryption, which is-
And that's fine. I, I, these are just comments and observations on my end. I'm looking at, I mean, I deal with 1,400 different types of electronic record systems, none of them are the same.
Basically.
That's why they're all making millions and millions of dollars.
Right, right.
So they send everything through PDFs and make it downloadable, and we're rival.
An important point, though, is, is when you say opt-out, once you're in the system, if you are 13 years of age or older, and you signed up at the age of 13 years of age or older, and you're in, no matter what their privacy policy does, you may not opt-out.
Right. My, my point is, I guess I'm going to the, I guess I'm going to the simplest term, which is-
Right.
-if I can encrypt my email from the school district and send it to, if I encrypt my email to a medical doctor with a medical bill or a file on a patient, and they're getting it securely, couldn't we do the same thing with a student's transcript? That's my only comment.
This operates more like that, I think.
And it might not count as an official transcript, maybe even Mr. Becker would know the answer to that, but I see there are great guidelines on what constitutes an official transcript.
Right. Yes.
How far do we get into this?
It was just a question.
No, I understand that. So, our current system right now, I'll use the archaic way that we're doing it right now, which is, we print this off, our registrar actually takes this piece of paper and puts it in the embosser and hand squeezes to have the race seal on it, to make official signs and dates. That's part of the process. If we go your route of sending a PDF, our kids are a lot smarter than everybody sitting in this room when it comes to technology. Example being, we had an announcement on our-
They're cheating me?
No, I'm not saying that they're cheaters, I'm saying they're very intelligent and they know how to, to make things work. The best example that I could use last year is, somebody got on and screenshotted our school webpage and created a fake announcement on top of our actual announcements, and there was hysteria across Hallow Sue that all seniors were to, I don't even remember the message, but it was more or less that the freshmen and everybody else need to get off campus, and it was a ditch day. So, they are crafty, and if they are able to do that, I would say a service would be provided shortly on a cheater's side to be able to alter PDF documents to submit to a college, and which would then put us at risk also that we represented that this was ours. And the other thing that has happened multiple times, if you do not pay close attention to who is sending you the email, I have had a lineup at my office door saying, I need to see you right now, and emails that have gone out to my staff, and people go through websites throughout the United States and look at whoever the principal is or whoever, and they misspell your name and create an account, and mass email your entire staff. And if you do not see that it was Scott Beckett that sent the email versus Scott Becker, then you have issues like that. So I would warn the way from that side, I don't disagree with, with the concern my opinions, but that I would, I would worry about that on, with that suggestion.
It's funny that you mentioned that story about them screenshotting, because when you read through the privacy policy for the student, they specifically talk about, some of their affiliates will, they call it framing, use framing, and so they're, they're telling the student in the fine print, you have to make really sure, it might look like it's coming from us, it may look like it's ours, but we take no responsibility for it because of this framing. I'd never heard the term before. That was new. So anyways-
The only thing-
That seems like the same thing that you were just talking about, so.
I guess I only wanted to also comment on that encryption that I was talking about. There's a two-factor authentication that goes with that. So you get three emails, that you're getting an email, you're getting an email with a password, and you have to authenticate it by, according to another way. I'm not saying you're going to do it, but I'm just saying that it's not just a, hey, you know, I'm sending you something open it. So there's a little more security.
And I think you're saying, send it directly to the college on behalf of the student, or send it to the student?
I don't, I'm just saying that that's just a way that medical providers and builders communicate with HIPAA compliance, because we have that authentication factor, that we can send some things securely by email. So, and it's not costing you thousands of dollars.
We have a motion to postpone item 6.2 until the April agenda. Marcia, do you want to call?
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
John Maston?
Yes.
Lisa Ramon?
Yeah.
Archana Aliar?
Yes.
Happy House?
Yes.
Can I, can I ask my direction then? Because I did provide-
Two suggestions.
Two, two suggestions. Am I asking the vendor to be available here during, during a board session, or are we going to hold a separate, not a full board, but have representatives go through and be able to ask those specific questions?
Or do, or do a work session? It could be an option as well.
I'd like to have your for me.
I think it'd be best to probably have somebody in person, if at all possible.
And my personal preference would be a special work session.
That'd fine as well.
So, my in-person is also located, it's telephonically, and he presented up on the screen, and everything's moving, and do that as well? Okay.
Marcia?
Question.
Did you have something?
So that was it, just to kind of give direction, find out which way. So we'll run a date and talk with him about-
On schedule.
I read it.
Oh, that's all right. All right. Item 6.3, Mrs. Sire.
Actually, I am going to turn this one over to Mr. Murphy.
Madam President, members of the board, it is recommended the governing board approve the compensation package for the 2019-2020 school year. The budget proposal for 1920, as indicated in the backup documentation, applies the following, and it will be a PowerPoint presentation after this. Salary, it's recommended that there be a base increase of $750 for certificated staff and $400 for classified staff. And one-time cost of living adjustment of 5% for all employees paid by two separate checks on two dates established during the 1920 fiscal year. And additional adjustments to the base pay for identified positions to adjust for inversion created by the mandatory minimum wage increase as a result of Prop 206. Effective employees will receive either the base salary increase or the inversion increase, whichever is higher. Benefits, there's an increase of approximately 7% of the premium contribution per employee, and a continued incremental transition of district contributions for dependent care premiums to the employee. And then we will also- And then we will also recommend sustaining the current athletic fees, which are $400 at the high school and $200 at the middle school. Additional compensation includes the classroom site funds, Prop 301, as noted in the, in the, um, action item here, where we continue to fund classroom site funds per legal guidelines, continue to fund by separate check or deposit on three dates established during the 1920 school year. Those are typically in November, March, and June. Fund 11, 12, and 13 will, will be distributed as documented. And funds remaining after the allocations become part of the overall carry forward to the district's respective classroom site fund categories to be used in the next fiscal year for the benefit of all current 301 eligible certified staff in that particular fiscal year. Specific employee benefits, insurance information, what's available, will be presented to the board. That was recently, uh, shown at the open meeting of the EBT back in February. There will be a brief overview of that in the PowerPoint. And the backup for this item will be in front of you here in just a minute.
Okay. Um, please, uh, call or motion, and then we will have the PowerPoint and discuss it.
I've moved, we approved 6.3 as presented.
Second.
Okay. So the PowerPoint that you're going to see is kind of a modification of three meetings that took place in front of a budget committee. All of this, there are some slides, like I said, that, that I did take out because of just the length of the presentation, because we are focusing on the 2019-2020 school year. But there is, there are some slides contained in here that kind of, um, show a longevity perspective, more of a plan or foundation which we can look at year after year after year. So the perspective shared within the budget committee, you'll notice that high-level view, something you'd see from, from an airplane, or that 30,000-foot view on the left, and then an up-close view of, of just things that affect individual parts of, of the operations of the district. So it's important for the committee to have a high-level view, um, and looking at areas that may not even pertain to that particular member within the committee, and then also be aware of the up-close view that may directly affect the member of that, that committee. It was shared, just to point out, the timeline for the override and the funding that, that is, that is shown there, the reminder that in November 2016, the override did pass, and then in 2017, 18 school year, that was the first year of fully funded override. For the first five years, we do receive full funding of the override. If the override does not renew, in year six, you'll see that on the PowerPoint, that we would receive two-thirds of the available override funds of the full funding. And then should the override still not renew, in year seven, we would be down to receiving only one-third of the override funds. And then in year eight, if the override does not renew, then there would be no additional funding received from that time forward until another override is passed. Just to kind of show a little bit of, I'm trying to look forward here, projecting out into the future, or trying to, even though we're focusing on 1920, it's, in my view, it's important, and I think I share this as a common view with most people, that we need to look out into the future to begin to be mindful of, of the possibilities, so we're not, we're not having to react in the short term. So we can try to have a long-term view and be mindful of, of the twists and turns that may be ahead. Hopefully, it's smooth sailing in each year, but just to be mindful of, of the, the possibilities that are, are likely, or that could occur. So in 1819, you'll see the very top, that's this current fiscal year. In red, I added, um, an insert there that was not there on the first budget committee meeting, but on the second budget committee meeting, I added that. You'll notice that it's, it says state base level. And that is the base level provided by the state. So every year, the legislature, they vote on and set based on any type of increase to the base level or inflation factor that is going to be, um, used to increase the base level. That is established by the state. This year, you see there in red, it's $4,009.57. You take that dollar amount and multiply it by our weighted student count, and then that's what produces the larger tens of millions of numbers. Roughly 28 million is what we have this particular year. When you take that base level of $4,009.57 and times it by the weighted student count. So if you look at that column going into 1920, these figures are pretty much set based on what I can see. Anything that still happened because the legislature, they're still in session, but from what we can see, uh, the governor's proposal of increasing average teacher salaries by 20%, uh, by 2020, and you can see in that increase column, this year is $210.50 per student. That gave, calculated out to provide a 10% increase to 301 eligible staff. In 2019, 2020, you see the, the dollar amount of $105. That's supposed to be the additional 5%. And then you see that number again for 2021, which would be the other 5%. That's added to the base, so you can see over there in the red that going into next year, the base increases to $41.94.57. That's because of the additional increase of the governor's proposal and the inflation factor, which they are saying in this particular time that we should receive a full 2% inflation. So that gives us an additional $185 to add to this year's base. And then that column on the far right, this is strictly just to show that if we, if we just let the base grow, if we did not commit the additional dollars to the base by way of base salaries within the district. The far-right column shows you the generated, the projected generated amount of new revenue that would come into the district by allowing the state's base level to increase from additional monies coming in on that increase column and then projected inflation over the next several years. So by the time you get down to that far-right column in 2024 and 2025, that would be if the override did not renew by then, that year would be the first year where we would have no additional override dollars. And then the, letting the base from the state increase to that four mil, that $4,006.24.57, there's a little bit of glare on there, so I had to make sure I get that right. It would be, we'd have a projected new generated dollar amount of about $3.9 million that would come into the district, just by simply allowing the state to catch up in, in supplying additional revenue to all districts across the state. So that would be new monies coming into the district based on our projected weighted student count. We can go back and visit that if there are any additional questions. So here's the compensation proposal for the board for this particular year. And again, this comes back to the board year after year. We're just looking at one year at a time. But in the next few slides, I'm going to show you just a, what we shared, what I shared at the budget committee meeting, a proposal when looking long-term. It's not to say that that is the proposal, because again, we're not adopting for years out. We're adopting one year at a time. You're, you're voting on one fiscal year at a time. So in this case, it's 2019-2020. In 2018-19, that's this current fiscal year, we have about $3 million in ongoing committed costs from the override. That was taking salaries, base salaries, additional contributions to medical. Those additional ongoing costs are strictly from the passage of the override. Going into 1920, adding to that $3 million figure, we are going to have to increase our medical contributions to the EBT by approximately $300,000. We're proposing a, a base increase across the board, again, as mentioned in the action item, $750 for certificated staff and $400 for classified. That's roughly $310,000. And then the inversion is mentioned in the action item of about $155,000. That's to take care of the increase in minimum wage because of Prop 206, in bringing up those who are making less than $12 an hour, and then also correcting those who would be, would be actually passed over or, or even compressed, I should say, because of the correction that would need to be made because of Prop 206. So we're trying not to, those who have been here for a while, not bring those who are all of a sudden going to get a fairly large dollar per hour. If they're going to go from $11 to $12 an hour, they're going to get a dollar increase for those who are not yet making $12 an hour. But if you're making $12.15, let's say, that, that develops a compression there. So we have people now who used to make 11, and those who are making 12.15. If we just correct the inversion, now we have people who are making 12, and then those same people are making $12.15 an hour. So we're trying to correct that and, and keep the distribution somewhat, somewhat fair across the board and honor those who, who are our current employees and not allow that compression to happen. So to take care of that, between the $400 base increase and the, and the $12 minimum wage increase, um, that inversion, as mentioned in the action item, those individuals would either get the $400 base salary increase or the inversion correction, whichever is greater. So we're trying again not to compress salaries here. On the far-right column, you see that as titled as annual one-time costs. In this current proposal, it's recommended that we have a 5% COLA cost of living adjustment for all staff. Now, it is noted, it, it is displayed there as a one-time cost, and these next slides will show the reason and rationale behind that. But that, that is the current proposal. You see on the far-left column down at the bottom, if you add up those dollars on the far left, the ongoing costs of 3 million plus the 300,000s that are there and the inversion correction, we have an ongoing committed cost of the override of about $3.7 So the budget detail, again, for next year, a little different look. We have roughly, projecting roughly about $4.2 million generated from the override, and then a projected increase, additional cost from allowing the state's base to continue to rise of about $1.2 million. And that's noted, again, right there on the far-right column, just below that solid black line. If we just allow the base, the state, to continue to increase its base, it's going to generate about $1.2 million in new revenue. You add those together, then you subtract the ongoing costs, as noted down there on the far-left corner, it leaves us with about $1.7 million. We take out roughly $200,000 to keep athletic fees as they are right now, the reduced athletic fees. You recall, a couple of years ago, it used to be $800, $800 to play. It's now 400. So to try to continue to sustain that, as communicated in the override before that passed, that was one of the main talking points about that and selling points, is to try to get the override to reduce athletic fees. So that's what we, we did do that. We're trying to continue to hold true to that promise. And then you see the $1.29 million figure, that's the cost of the, the 5% one-time COLA. We are electing to pay that out in two payments, as stated in the action item. So that way, it's not just added to someone's paycheck of over 26-pay. We want to truly treat this as a one-time, so, um, in, in order to try to avoid a sense of dependency on it, because we're, we're trying to have a long-term view of should the override not renew. Again, that's a should and a if, that we're trying to, to develop a soft landing point, so that if it does not renew, we can, we can land pretty, pretty softly. That's the plan. So you see that with that proposal, it generates about a $200,000 carry forward, but more importantly, in the far-left, bottom-left corner, you can see that what once was 3.7 million, because we allowed the state's base level to increase and not commit any more dollars to our base salaries as an entire staff, the ongoing cost is now 2.5 million, because the state's base is increasing, but yet we're not committing those dollars and tying them up into committed ongoing base salary increases yet. So we're now down to 2.5 million. So just to forecast, and again, this is to paint a bigger picture in a sense of, of a proposed direction. Again, we will revisit this year after year. Again, in 2020, 2021, anticipated about a $4.2 million override, receiving that revenue. You'll notice that the projected additional state base level continues to, to rise, and then assuming we don't, we don't make any additional commitments to the base, we keep our ongoing costs the same, again, we revisit this as a committee year after year, if we just kept things the same, you can see that those two numbers are now more closely, they're getting closer together. So the 2.2 million is increasing from the state, the 3.7 million, and this proposal's just staying the same, still honoring the override or the athletic reduction. Another one-time COLA at 5%, that's based on the previous year, so it's a true 5%. And then factoring in a medical premium increase projected at about 7%. It leaves us with a carry forward of $847,000. And then again, if you look at the, the bottom-left corner, the ongoing costs, because we, in this proposal, in this forecast, not adding anything to committing any future dollars to the base at this particular time, you see how, um, our ongoing committed costs are starting to reduce because the state base level continues to increase. We are still paying out in this proposal here, a one-time COLA. So there's still, there's still an increase provided, but it's just a little different. It's not your 26-pay, uh, high-levi pay check. Again, just a forecast, looking out into the future as a vision, not saying that this, the board is not adopting this, I just want to make that clear. So going into 21, 22, override, this is the last year of full funding of the override if it does not renew. Projecting the base to continue to increase, now it's a little bit less of an increase because we're now just fully relying on inflation at this particular time, unless the legislature does something else and adds some type of other increase in there. We're just going off what we know now on current proposals. Keeping the ongoing costs the same, keeping athletic commitments, again, another 5% COLA one-time, another 7% increase in, in medical premiums, just budgeting for that. We've been told that it's anywhere from 5 to 10 on average in the marketplace, so we're, we're keeping it at about 7. It generates about $1.1 million in carry forward, but then again, in that bottom-left corner, we're now down to about $1.1 million in committed ongoing costs by letting the base of the state increase without making any base commitments in, in our district and ongoing costs, based on the forecast again. So now in 2022, 2023, this is where it starts to, you know, you know, it gets, gets interesting here, because if the override does not renew, we're only going to be receiving two-thirds of our override funding. But hopefully, inflation is still occurring, the state base continues to rise, with our committed ongoing costs at present, still athletic fees, still putting in another 5% COLA one-time, so we're not committing that cost long-term. Another 7% medical premium increase, but this time it generates a negative carry forward. And then in a couple of slides, you'll see the importance of why we need to be careful with other carry forwards where we actually had a healthy carry forward. We'll see how, how that'll work out in just a minute. But then again, bottom-left corner, you see that the ongoing costs, committed costs from the override continues to reduce, so we're now down below a million dollars at this point, um, with an override phase out should an override not renew. In 23, 24, we're now down to the last bit of the override, it's one-third funded at this point. Project. this point, projecting that inflation is still occurring within the state and then our ongoing costs were remaining as they are, as they're proposed at this particular time. Athletic fees there, it still continues to support that, another one-time five percent for that particular year, and then another seven percent medical premium increase that's budgeted, this time we're down to a negative, a strong negative carry forward. But then you look at the ongoing costs down at the bottom left, we're now down to nearly a quarter million dollars at that point. And then going into the first year, should override not renew, we are not receiving any override dollars, but if we are still receiving some inflation from the state, you can now see that the base level from the state, the state revenue, has now increased enough to where it's above our ongoing cost commitment of the override. Still budgeting for a seven percent medical premium increase or maybe two hundred seventy-four thousand carry forward, but even more importantly, down at the bottom left corner, that if or should an override not renew at this point, without making any cuts to what we have already given out over the last few years, we're now down to having zero commitments there on what we've committed through the override. So this is again a forecast looking forward, not saying this is the route, but we look at this one year at a time, but at least there's a talking point, there's a vision, a direction, a possibility, something to communicate and talk about and may not be agreed upon by everyone, but at least it's a place to have conversation. And again, at this time, we're not here to adopt this, it's just forward-looking. So this is where it gets, it's where it's important to talk about carry forward. In order to sustain those five percent one-time cost of living increases, we need to rely upon the healthier years, these next few years, to get us through the times where or should or if the override doesn't renew, and we can continue to sustain one-time cost of living of five percent so that staff can continue to see some progression year after year after year. At that point, we have to really reevaluate where we are and then have some serious discussions about base increases at that point. So the future is unknown, but I believe having at least this out there so that we can at least have a talking point, something to galley around and look at, pick apart, to critique, you know, just have an input on, because I think it's important that, my biggest fear is we just keep passing year after year after year and then when we get to the eleventh hour and should something not go in our favor, we're now scrambling to do something about a three million dollar figure. And I can tell you that that would be comfortable. So just some considerations and assumptions, assuming medical premiums are going to increase, we're going to continue to decline enrollment, hopefully we can fix that, as noted on the plan on the far right, we need to address, we need to try to do something about that. I believe that we've acted upon some things, that the board has acted upon some things to try to pick outside the box, to try to give community members options as to how they want their children educated. We see that by way of the magnet expansion. We have to get creative and I think that we're seeing that. Needs, there has to be a sustainable base salary and health insurance outlook and mindset. We need to have it sustainable. We can't give and then take away. That's the whole purpose of trying to look years out into the future so that we can have talking points, like I said, if we want it all now, but if we give it all now, then it can be painful in the future and then reversing that declining enrollment trend. So just to point out, here's a few more slides, the compensation trends from 2016, 17, just showing the average teacher salary in 2016, 17 and our current, our premiums back, medical premiums. And then you can see that the governor's proposal was in 20, for the 2018, 2019 school year, this particular school year, adding ten percent to the average teacher salary. Back in 17, 18, because of the passage of the override, there were pretty substantial increases in the form of just a flat rate dollar amount given to staff in the area of teacher salaries, for example, or two thousand dollars given to the base, and that ranged from anywhere from a teacher receiving six percent, that was equating out to about six percent of their salary, to about three percent. So there was a range from the low end to the high end, so three to six percent. And then you can see premiums continue to increase all the way down. In 18, 19, the average teacher salary, a true ten percent increase to the average teacher salary occurred, and then the seven hundred and fifty dollar flat rate that's being proposed for next year in this current budget proposal or compensation package proposal calculates out to be about one and a half percent, somewhere in that area. So over the last few years, there's been about a sixteen percent swing, a change between 16, 17 to next year in the average teacher salary. And if you look at medical premiums from 2016, 17 to where it will be next year, it calculates out to be roughly four percent. So in compensation, total compensation, I know that's talked about and mentioned quite a lot, you're looking at roughly twenty percent to the average teacher salary over the last few years. This is just a, just a note, the enrollment trends, I know that there was conversation in our budget committee about, you know, where we get these numbers. We have declining enrollment, you can see that some years are worse than others, starting enrollment, we have to stack to a certain level and then we decline greatly by the end in a lot of cases. So it's just something, we look at all different areas, we're talking about numbers and bodies and revenue because of our daily membership. So it's important that we look at data trends as well so we can kind of look to the future to see what is likely to occur. Again, that's why it's so important to address the declining enrollment situation. This was shared last year as well, but updated for this year. So this is a certified staff, average, this is your teacher, basically, your teacher salary, you see a low, mid and high. Back in 18, 19, you can see at the top half of that table, you can see the 18, 19 base and then what is being proposed for next year. You can see that across the board in the form of equity, you see health benefits, so for the entry-level teacher, the teacher that would make thirty-five thousand, seven fifty right out of school, no experience, no additional college, other than a bachelor's, will receive roughly nine thousand dollars in health benefits, that's true for the teacher on the high end, who's been here for over thirty years. But you can see the percentage, that's interesting to see there, the percentage between benefits to that base salary of the entry-level teacher compared to the benefits at the base salary of the thirty-plus-year teacher. They're talking twenty-five percent for the low and thirteen percent for the high. So there is a little bit of difference, quite a lot of difference there between benefit to salary ratio and what's being given to all staff across the board. But then you look at the comparison between those who are entry-level more than the ones who are on the higher end as the experienced teacher. This is the same but for classified staff and it's broken down in the hourly, so you can see the 18, 19, the top half, nineteen, twenty proposed down at the bottom. This is even more interesting because if you look at health benefits, again, they receive the same health benefit package as all staff, we're all the same across the board, nine thousand nineteen dollars for your low, your twelve dollar an hour employee versus the same benefit for your hourly staff of the higher end, but then you have a seventy percent difference on that low end versus thirteen percent on the high. So there's quite a difference. So the last part of what we asked the committee to do before they voted on the proposal to bring to you tonight, we asked them to consider which of the options, because there were several options and it was narrowed down to a one that's before you tonight, best fulfill the governor's intent, they need to recruit and retain certified staff and the equitable and total compensation. So before they voted, we asked them to consider that, they also had discussions at their tables. So before you tonight, again, it was quite a lengthy presentation to just talk about one year, but I think it's important to try to at least show that we're striving to have vision and look into the future so that when we come before you again next year, we're going to reevaluate that process and see where we are and hopefully we'll see, continue to see the ongoing cost commitment coming down while also being mindful of needs of the economy. We just never know what the economy is going to bring this next year. So this is the proposal brought before the board as mentioned in the action item six point three. And are there any questions?
Mrs. Cott, do you have a hand up?
I don't have a question, I just wanted to make a comment that I appreciate all your hard work. Everybody who worked on the budget committee's hard work, but especially Mr. Murray, because I think you've set the standard for what I think our taxpayers should expect every year when we're looking at compensation packages. And now we have a history, you know, you've set it up so that we've got a history of what we're doing every year. I hope that continues, you know, forever. Very clear, very understandable and it's easy to go back and see the history and that was not the case until you took this on. So I appreciate that.
Any other discussion or questions?
Couple of observations. I wasn't on the board during the bond and override election. Back, I think I sat in a room with a bunch of other people and argued very vociferously for not one or the other, but both, the bond and the override. I like this a lot. And the reason why I like it a lot is we, in that committee process, said to our community over and over and over again that the override was to game the system because our state wasn't coming to the table. Our state has come to the table. We should be in a position where we go back to our community and say, not only has the state come to the table, but if you sort of choose not to renew the override, we have a way to get ourselves out of needing the override, at least in the short term. And I think that accomplishes this. There's always great ways to spend money, but we all need to be mindful that there are people out in the community who make much less than anything presented on this presentation, who send their kids to our schools, who pay the taxes, who pay the rent to the people who get the taxes and so forth, who actually put the bill for everything that goes on here and we really need to be respectful of them as well. And I think this starts to get us to a point where we could have that faith back. It was a faith that I think that we lost for a period of time. And plans like this will potentially get us the faith of our community back and if we're in a position where we, at some point in the future, we need to go back to our community, I think we're going to be more open to listening if we can do things like this. And so I know it wasn't just you, Mr. Murray, you've got a staff that helped you with this and I know that Superintendent Sire and Ms. Vestadegel has been intimately involved in this throughout the process as well. I just thank for everybody who worked on this and everybody who sat through the three meetings, which were long and boring and sometimes a little contentious and it gets to be interesting some days when you get twenty-five, thirty people in a room together to talk about money and pay. I want to thank them for their efforts, but I also think that the final product, what we've come up with, I think honors our commitment to our community and I think that's the most important thing that we can do. We serve their pleasure, they don't serve ours.
Anyone else? I just to echo what they said, but I'm really happy that you were able to address the compression issue. That's kind of remarkable that you found a way around it, under and over that issue, so good job. Yes, you certainly.
I would like to also compliment Mr. Murray, his staff and as well as our director's team, because we did spend a lot of time and everybody who served on the committee, we had a little bit more compressed time scheduled for the committee this year because we waited until we actually had our information about benefits. But the process worked for us and for, I hope for our staff as well in that, you know, we brought forth a proposal, they had other suggestions, other concerns, we revised that proposal, additional suggestions, concerns, other options brought back. So there were, there was, it really was a reciprocal process. It wasn't us saying, this is what we're going to do and, you know, here's, you know, you don't even need to know why, sort of an attitude, if I can say that. The other thing I would like to remind everybody that the ongoing three point seven million also includes us adding physical education teachers in elementary schools, being able to bring back additional art and music, so they're divided to per school. And that was really a great decision that was made by our staff, that we needed to take some of that money and put it toward that staffing. We had a speaker tonight who talked about the need for counseling, that's definitely a need that we have in the future. And so as we talked about, we're finally able to do something with our compensation in order to help attractively train routine teachers, we want to keep doing that. I still think that our community will recognize that we have other needs and I hope that they'll be willing to step up and say, we support you for some of the other needs that we know that you have as well. And I just appreciate the commitment that everybody has made toward making the district such a good place to work.
Thank you.
And for the record, I just want to note how few people are in the room because the past five years, this room has been hacked on the night that the compensation package comes before the board. And I think a lot out of fear, like what's going to happen, what are they going to do? And it's not tonight, and I think that speaks to what has happened over the past few years.
Mrs. Cott.
So I don't know why I brought my computer tonight, but apparently it was supposed to. Thank you so much for all the hard work that you guys did on this budget. I have a couple of observations. One of them is, I think more than anything, one of the biggest effects that can be made to the compensation and making sure that we can meet these goals is to turn around the declining enrollment. It really seems that that's an obvious, no duh. But part of that, I think, is because if, and I'm just looking at the contributions that the district makes towards the employees' packages, for example, for a family, twenty-two thousand four hundred and the district pays fourteen thousand of that. Employee and children, the seventeen thousand, the district pays twelve thousand eight hundred ninety-three. So there's a substantial contribution. And for me, if I were an employee here, I would obviously be very appreciative of that. The seven percent premium increase gave you a bit of a pause. I was catching my breath there a little bit. I'm hoping that that is a sustainable premium increase for the medical, only because it fluctuates and I think the focus would be on making sure that we have healthy employees and, you know, the goal for, you know, the next renewal is to get a wellness incentive back into the mix. But I think just making sure that you're mindful of, you know, the things that go on and, you know, staying healthy, that kind of thing. But again, I think it gets back to, you know, increasing that enrollment and for me, the, you know, the kind of in-your-face is, we are competing with two major other educational institutions in my mind that I see in our community, and one of them happens to be my church, and they're growing, they're expanding their seventh and eighth grade as we speak. And the other one is Our Lady of the Lakes. And we have to compete with that. They are going to be presenting and offering a classical education and we have to be able to do that. able to do that before we get those things back.
Thank you. For those of you who may not know, Mrs. Cox is the president of our Employee Benefit Trust, which the board deals with medical premiums and health insurance, that type of thing. So thank you, Mrs. Cox. Okay, Martha Jo, I believe we're ready to vote.
Yes, I do have a motion and a second. John Maston?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes.
Archie Anna Elliott?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes. Item six point four, Mrs. Bestedagel.
Madam President and Governing Board, it is recommended that the Governing Board approve the attached list for employment with the district for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year of certified administrative and supervisor staff, teachers, counselors, speech therapists, speech technicians, psychologists, directors, administrators, and supervisors. It is also recommended that the Governing Board approve the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty contract.
I move we approve six point four as presented.
Second. Any discussion? Call for the vote.
Archie Anna Elliott?
Yes.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
John Maston?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
I'm quick, that means I'm corrected.
That's my question. I'm sorry.
That was with the change that, in item number fourteen, that changed the board's state to district.
And did you get this?
Make sure that the board understood that, that this was a statement from the work session?
Thank you. Then reading on to six point five, Mrs. Bestedagel.
Madam President and Governing Board, it is recommended that the Governing Board approve the attached list for support positions within the school district for the two thousand nineteen, twenty school year. Mrs. Cox, I beg to stand.
I move we approve six point five as presented.
Second. Any discussion?
Lisa Ramon?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
John Maston?
Yes.
Archie Anna Elliott?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes. Six point six, Mrs. Bestedagel.
Madam President and Governing Board, it is recommended that the Governing Board approve the contract for Frontline for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year. There will be a one-time cost upon signing for ten thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars, and in the annual cost, thirty-nine thousand one hundred and thirty-four dollars and forty cents. Administration is recommending the continuation and expansion of contracted services with Frontline Education. LHUSD currently uses Frontline for online absence management, we're requesting to expand their services to include recruiting and hiring software, talent management, evaluation management, digital forms and record retention, Frontline Central, and online time and attendance management. Frontline's talent management software is greatly needed to modernize and update the online application tool utilized by LHUSD. Administrators will be able to easily post jobs to online job boards as positions are opened. Administrators will be able to proactively recruit employees who fit specific certifications using K-12 job spots. Onboarding paperwork will be sent out immediately upon hire. Current Excel spreadsheets are used for evaluations with hard copies printed and stored in files at both school and in the personnel office. In addition to housing our evaluation forms, Frontline Evaluation Management will allow evaluators to track walkthrough data, evaluation completion rates, and performance trends among staff throughout their schools. It will allow district administration to use data based on evaluation results to make recommendations. Employee onboarding files, evaluation documents, and other records will be housed on Frontline Central. This would replace Winocular, which we currently use to store our files and post jobs. Winocular's functionality is limited. Winocular costs approximately seven thousand dollars annually and will be discontinued. Time and attendance is a digital clock system and will allow us to eliminate paper time cards. The system will communicate with Visions for payroll and with our current Frontline absence management system. We will be able to accurately track hours worked and save time on data entry. The contract was reviewed by purchasing and label.
I move we approve six point six as presented.
Second. Any discussion?
It's a new question, I didn't have it last, or two days ago. But on page seven of eight, my question on four point two, is if this is for staff, why are they addressing student privacy?
So, Frontline also offers IDP software, and they also offer like a synergy software that we aren't purchasing. So this is their contract if we were to use that type of software?
It's both of those ways.
Correct.
Anyone else?
I'm sorry to interrupt, and Mr. Murray, I just noticed that we, and we have this issue, as you may recall, and this is prior to the vote. This price in the contract has plus applicable sales tax, which we did not include in the price in the memo, and so I would ask the board to consider that we have an amount not to exceed fifty thousand in case the tax and so forth.
Not the one year?
I would have meant my motion.
I would draw my second.
I would have meant my motion to indicate, if I see thirty-nine as the annual subscription and I see ten eighty fifty as the one-time startup cost, not to exceed sixty-five thousand.
That'll make him feel better, I think.
Second. All right. Do we have any motion on the floor? Do we have any more discussion? Martha Jo?
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
John Maston?
Yes.
Archie Anna Elliott?
Yes.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes. Item six point seven, Mrs. Sire.
Thank you. After our discussion of the curriculum committee work sessions, we did have a suggestion to actually insert our curriculum philosophy into our policy. And so it is recommended that the Governing Board approve the first presentation of the revised policy IA instructional goals and objectives. On March thirteenth of two thousand eighteen, the Governing Board adopted a curriculum philosophy statement to guide the work of the curriculum committees. This statement embodied newly revised mission statement and guiding principles. The curriculum philosophy was the basis for the curriculum work sessions that were conducted by the board during the month of January two thousand nineteen. It was noted during the review of the work session that our philosophy statement, while adopted by the board, was not part of the board's policy. Policy IA is the board's introductory policy to the section that covers curriculum and instruction. The language of the original policy was very dated and did not convey our local philosophy. The proposed revisions incorporate the philosophy statement and provide greater detail on our areas of focus. As you will note, and we did have discussion at the work session, we just deleted the entire policy, the original IA, began that policy with our curriculum philosophy statement, which goes through just the first paragraph and then the indented section on top of the next page. Starting after the definition of critical thinkers, this is new language or revised language from the previous policy. And there was some discussion by the board on the item ability to conduct research and to think and write critically. So we did provide the board two options of possibilities for that particular statement, and so those are suggested there, and I don't know if you want to, have you read those? Out to you before we ask for a motion?
Well, now we have them, we have a motion.
No, but I will make the motion that we approve six point seven as presented using option two.
I assume you threw your other motion?
No, we didn't have a motion on the other motion.
Oh, you didn't make a motion?
No, but I did just now.
I know, you did. All right, do we have a second?
Second, but I think, yeah, I will read that. So in the original policy, the ability to conduct research and think critically, and so the suggestion was to add think and write critically about history, science, literature, the arts, and worldviews. The number two option is a little bit more clarifying, so that the public could understand the policy better. It says ability to conduct research and to think and write critically about history, science, literature, and the arts, and how these subjects are impacted by differing worldviews, in parentheses, belief systems. So the motion was for that second statement?
Correct.
Now, is there any discussion?
I would just add the caveat that this is okay by me, as long as there isn't any sort of preference or priority given to any particular worldview.
I definitely want them all to be taught, so that everybody can discern. That is, you know, this is not about having just a Christian worldview being taught in our schools, if that's your concern. I want all of them taught, and that'll be something I'm sure that the curriculum committees and this designer will discuss, so.
I actually welcome them all being taught as well. I think having a diverse input and really critically think your way through a worldview is something that every student that we have should be able to manage.
John Maston?
Yes.
Archie Anna Elliott?
Yes.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes.
And Nicole Cohen?
Enthusiastically, yes.
Kathy Cox? Yes. Item six point eight, Mrs. Sire.
Yes, thank you. This is the first presentation of our policy JFABC and a proposed new regulation JFABC-R on the admission of transfer students. It is recommended that the Governing Board approve the first presentation of revised policy JFABC and the new regulation JFABC-R admission of transfer students. This policy is being revised in order to align with ARS Section fifteen dash seven oh one point oh one regarding the admission of transfer students' credit until they have a unified school district number one, as well as the practice of assigning credit and grades for transfer credit for internal students. Historically, when students have transferred to the high school, there has not been a consistent practice in the assignment of letter grades versus credit. For example, a student taking a concurrent class with a university or college would receive a CR or credit, while a student taking that same class at LHHS would receive the letter grade. Similar situations occur when students are transferring from an online setting, in which case they received the letter grade. Conversely, if they took a class, a university or a college class instead of an online course, they would receive a CR. New regulation clarifies the details for assigning credits and grades. This regulation also provides a change in the calculation of weighted grades from a point three five to a five-point scale. The revision of the grade weight to an A equals five, B equals four, C equals three, D equals one, and E equals zero scale for honors and advanced placement classes aligns the Cabasut High School with the weighting system used by most of the state of Arizona as well as schools across the United States. When students apply for college, their applications ask them to select whether their high school grades on a four-point scale or a five-point scale. Our students currently have to choose the four-point scale on their college applications, while many of their counterparts are able to use their weighted GPA by choosing the five-point scale. So the changes in the policy, as you will note on page one of two, we have added under admission of transfer students, academic credit transfer as a subtitle at the top. We have provided the statute reference on the first item. We also have updated the statute reference under the credit, since that was no longer a statute, the point oh two, and then changed the May to a shovel. So those are the major changes in the actual policy. Then the regulation is the description of how this will occur, and that's the purpose of the regulation, and this is a brand-new regulation which defines how we will be accepting those credits. I'm happy to answer any questions. Again, this is the first review.
I move we approve six point eight as presented.
Second. Discussion?
Question. In the weighting scale in respect to college admissions, does this change the way that colleges are prone to unweight a grade in the admission process?
I would have to ask our principal or counselor who might know the answer to that?
One of my questions is, why are we going to a five-point? I'm not sure the reason we're changing.
To the five-point scale? Just for ease of understanding and calculation, and just students can use the five-point scale on their college application.
So on a college application for admissions?
It is based on four-point.
Sarah, would you come up here, mine? I heard you clicked on the spot, but I would be able to hear you better. And I have my notes at work, unfortunately, but on admissions for any school, it's on a four-point basis. It's unweighted GPA for admissions. And ironically, this week I was talking to a student about UCLA, and we were looking at the admissions requirements, and they don't even mention what the GPA requirement is to be admitted on their website. But when they talk about the profile of like the freshman class of two thousand eighteen, the average was four point one to four point two. So it just told me a little bit about what the GPA is of a four-point. And then I looked at Hurd as well, just out of curiosity. Hurd does the same thing, does not mention a GPA for admissions requirements, but then when they show their profile, it's four point two. It's always in the four-point range. I found that interesting, and that's just something I'd like us to consider.
Well, to be more than four points, it has to have used a weighted grade.
Right, and so their weighted would have been like similar to ours, if not necessarily a five-point. So just something to consider. I just, you know, I don't want people to think that, I don't want parents to think that the weighted GPA will get them into the school. That's my biggest concern.
Right, and I've got a son who's applying for baseball scholarships, and in that process, one of the things they told him very early, like almost four years ago, was the weighted GPA was nothing.
Right, and so I just want to have that emphasis to the board as well. And even when we give the transcripts to our students, we tell them, it's not the GPA on your transcript that gets you admitted, because they're not looking at everything on the transcript. I just want to make sure the board knows that and parents know that.
My guess is that we're actually going to the five-point system in honors, more along the lines of a transfer student coming in. That way it would be easier to transfer.
And while there are--
But it's going to be for all students, not just our transfer students.
Correct. The weighted scales would be the same.
Yes, because I want to make sure. And then the question we had, I had, is this for, starting with the class of two thousand twenty-three, or are we going to change it for everybody? Because that's going to affect our juniors. And so I didn't have an answer for that, and I don't know how it will affect our juniors. I may need time to do some data, but it makes an difference.
Did you want--
My recommendation with that, because of the amount of work that would be attached with that, is that we start with the income of the class.
Freshman.
Freshman next year.
To make sure that was clarified.
As far as the, for the quiz scale, but I think for any future courses that students take? We weren't compliant with the law.
Right, and this is only about the GPA.
Okay, yes, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, GPA, I'm--
That's more of an appreciation of the policy.
I think Mrs. Bestedagel has something.
So, do you just want to talk really quickly about, because we have gone to a five-point scale in the past, and what the, what we've learned from when we went to a five-point scale, and why we went back to just adding the point three five?
And I don't remember since I've been at the high school, since two thousand three, of a change, and so you might want to talk clearly more about that, because you were there.
So we did change to a five-point scale. I think you were the principal, because that was what was really traditional, and what we found that year is because the kids took fewer, in order to boost their GPA, they took fewer non-honors classes, so they had a smaller number to divide from, because they weren't getting those points from that. The most they could get was four points, so they were dropping CTE, student council, they were dropping non-honors classes, so their divisor was as small as possible. So we ended up actually switching back to adding just--
I think what happened is we looked at going into a five-point and decided against it.
And that's the catch from it, is the kids will game the system versus just adding point three five. We'll have honors kids that will say, well, yeah, I'm-- We'll have honors kids that will say, well, yeah, I'm an honors kid, but I still want to take advanced autos. And so for me as a parent, I, there was a four-point scale. And my daughter, she had a four-point, whatever she had, and that's what she entered on her Common App. So, and then they unwitted it anyway, so that is just--
So let me, let me hear that. So are you suggesting we're making a mistake to go to this system?
I am not suggesting anything. I am passing on what Bob Pauly told me when I thought this was a really, really amazing idea. But, but that is, and, and we did talk about changing, and I do remember clearly kids coming to drop honors classes, because they realized if they had take, or non-honors classes, if they had taken the fifth class of Student Council, they were suddenly no longer valedictorian. Versus if they just took the four classes, they, and their number that they were dividing was only twenty versus twenty-one, their GPA was higher.
I think that would happen with any rate.
The point three five gets added on after. The point, the point three five gets added on after.
They're gaining it.
They're gaining it.
I'm going to defer this, this, the principal on site recommendation, and I, I have to support it based on my information from working with colleges.
So Mr. Becker, you had recommended that this occur. And so if in the course of the next year--
And I do want to say, I suggested that they consider it.
Okay. But in the course of the next year or so, since we're not going to put this into place until the incoming freshman class enters, then, I mean, you have time to kind of put a model in your head and, and try to figure this out, what's really happening. And you would come back to the board and, and say, you know what? This is really not working the way we hoped it to.
In our, in our job as educators, and whether you're in the classroom or you're in the front office, the reflection piece is one of the biggest things that you can do in your profession. I think that's anywhere. So absolutely, I would have no problem standing here in front of everybody saying, we made a mistake, we need to back you train up, and we need to fix things. I, I am not scared or afraid to admit that in the public forum by any means. But when we see people doing this across the United States, throughout Arizona, and what, why are we doing something different when everybody else is utilizing this? Also helps drive that decision.
Any other discussion? Madam President, I'd like to withdraw my second. Okay?
I'd like to amend my motion. I move that we approve six point eight as presented, but keep the high school waiting scale the same. Point three five on the weighting scale. So in other words, rather than going to the five-point system, we would maintain our four, and we would, we would have the conversion factor of point three five.
But that's not the system that we have currently?
That is the system.
And it's still--
Okay, so then why would we be making a motion to approve what we already have in place?
We still have to change the policy.
The policy is actually a change to the five-point scale. The issue, part of the issue is for transfer students. And so this is a, because they're all transferring in with a five-point grading scale. So we talked about the, the transfer of the weighting, then we have to convert those G P As to seven. That's really concerned me a lot as well.
I was wondering if, if you--
We don't have a motion on the floor.
You don't though?
Not until we have a second.
Okay, second. You did, you did--
Could I hear the motion again, then?
I--
You drew his motion, and Mrs. Cohen drew her second. But now--
And you made actually--
Yes, and--
I, I made, I made a motion to keep, to keep the weighting scale the same for this district. And there was, there, there's more to this change than just the weighting scale, is my understanding.
In terms of the policy?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, but the motion is to approve the policy, but not change the weighting scale.
But if we go back to the four-point, then first, we're going against the recommendation of the principal and the superintendent. And second, what happens to the incoming transfer students?
I--
What happens?
I have, I have my own thought process.
Does it happen?
Nothing changes, as far as what this, what the student sees as far as the grade weighting and from what we're currently doing. Grade weighting is more about class ranking than it is about college admissions. And, and once you understand that, this is the competitive end of grades. So, so what we're talking about--
Just saying now.
Okay.
Well, and should we really be making policy because students will gain the system and may not take a course and may not get another opportunity? I don't know that we should be making decisions on policy for that purpose.
I, I look at it the opposite view. I look at it as are we now removing the student from the ability to take advanced autos or to take Student Council in that, in that extra class? Are we telling the student that their weighted GPA is more important than the well-averaged individual we choose to produce out of wakeups in schools?
Well, wouldn't that be their decision? Like, there has to be some accountability for a student who isn't going to take something that they want to take.
They're making a competitive decision.
Okay, we, I do, is that understanding facility and I have a second?
Yeah, you do.
It's seconded.
So you, you have now seconded.
I have seconded, because I want to discuss it. It's the only way to discuss it. It's not that I agree with it.
I wasn't sure that you--
Okay.
Christina?
Christina Musselman, I just have a question. Does this also pertain to current students that use M C C classes to transfer over to the high school as credit?
Well, let me start.
Okay, so--
No, she's going to AP. This is just the weighted.
Just a question as a freshman mom, when I look at this, is my daughter is a Student Council's kid. She also wants to pursue C T E, but she was told by her counselor that if she were to take, let's say, Spanish at M C C, she receives credit. And the counselor straight up told her, count yourself out for valedictorian in those roles, because you will not, you will just get credit, so it's almost like a zero.
And that's why this policy didn't do a grade. Yes, that would happen right away, because it is not legal for us to do.
But that would impact like a current student?
Yes.
Probably, Chris, from M C C. That doesn't stay in the policy.
I have heard.
Will they get honors credit if they take it from M C C or A S U? That's a no.
They would get the letter grade.
But they'd get the letter grade, if she got an A in M C C's--
But it won't help with--
Versus a credit.
Correct.
But it won't help the invaledictorian.
It's not honors. I just--
Just one question.
We're just deterring kids from, again, taking C T E, Student Council, those courses by telling them, you're counting yourself out of that top ten if you-- I don't, that was my question. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I feel like there's quite a bit that's up in the air right now. Maybe it might be best to postpone this till next month as well, and maybe have some clarity between now and then. I share Mr. Becker's view that I'm not afraid to admit a mistake, but I'd rather not make one in the first place, and I don't feel like I know how to vote, that that would be in the best interest of the students.
So, so there are two parts to what you're really looking at. One of them needs to be changed, because we are not in compliance at this moment. The second one is a regulation that we have the latitude to put this grading into place. The first part, we have no latitude on that whatsoever. It, it needs to take place, not that I'm forcing your vote by any means, but we are not--
And this is only a first reading?
Yes.
But we wouldn't be in compliance if we don't do that first.
Correct.
So we're not in compliance, right?
Correct.
Madam President, I'd like to withdraw my second again for the--
I would like to amend my motion to approve six point eight without the change listed for the weighted grade, so we could be further study of the best way to accomplish that.
Is there a second? Now a second?
Well, okay, so, I'm sorry, I'm not trying to be dense. I just still really don't understand. And I wanted to make sure that Mrs. Musselman's concerns are addressed. For this graduating class, if we don't, if we only approve the part that proves us into compliance, but we don't approve the other part at this meeting, and it gets postponed another month, will that be enough time to change the seniors' grades, or does that not really matter?
That, that part would not be affecting any current student of the weighting portion.
So just to come into compliance and better understand.
If we wanted to come back and suggest again that this policy be revised again to include the grading scale weighting change, that we could do that at a later date?
And that's what your motion was?
Right, and, and, and my concern is, is that, is that I'm not afraid to fix a mistake in public, but when we start talking about something that our students are competitive about, and that's really was my point on the, on the competitive side of this, they argue over tens of a point at the end of their senior year, trying to get to the top of that ladder. I don't want to make a mistake and then have to admit to it a year or two down the road and mess that up for someone. I, I don't want to be the guy that is pointed to that student achievement was messed up, because we didn't understand what we were looking at.
We need to figure this out right when we--
Absolutely.
And not go back. This is one of those things that would mess a lot of things up if we try to correct it later.
Yes.
It'd be a lot of work for people. Okay.
One side, one side that I'll, I'll throw the thought out there for you to contemplate as well is the undue pressure that these great point chasers are put upon by their parents. Nobody within the walls of a school to compete to that level. This also helps that side of a student to not be, to succumb to that pressure with the amount of thoughts and things that our kids have to deal with today. That takes one stress away from also. So that is something that needs to be contemplated throughout this, is the undue pressure that they receive to even be in the top twenty, so that they are able to go to a dinner and recognize a teacher. Is the undue stress on that kid worth a one-night dinner and honoring a teacher? So food for thought, watching.
Exactly what we want to get around.
That's a good point. And it's not just parental pressure. I'm, I'm sure it's not coming from the, the staff, but it's peer pressure too. And it's, and it's the social and peer pressure too. They're all looking at how wonderful everybody else is, you know what I mean? So.
Okay, then, how for the vote?
Archana Liar?
Yes.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
John Maston?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
So the next month, we'll bring it back with this paragraph reward with the point three five.
Then? Six point nine, Mr. Murray?
Madam President, members of the board, it is recommended the board approve the vouchers for February 2019, student activity funds for grades K through twelve, and the auxiliary funds for January 2019.
Do we have a motion?
I move we approve six point nine as presented.
Second. How for the vote?
Lisa Ramon?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen, yes. John Maston?
Yes.
Archana Liar, yes. Kathy Cox?
Yes.
The next part of our agenda is informational. Mrs. Asay?
Thank you. So we, we approve our gifts and donations within the consent agenda. So I did want to point out this month that our value in our gifts and donations to our schools was almost $12,000, and we are currently at a year-to-date total of over $141,000 in donations to our school. I did note in this particular one that a six-foot suit of armor was donated to the-- I'm not sure where that is located, but it's unfortunately too short for Mr. Becker.
Thank God, right?
I also would like to review, I did include in this section for the board on the first blue page, the information regarding the board's direction at the meeting where we discussed curriculum and instruction. The, the motion was for our team to come out with a plan for moving forward with the recommendations from the curriculum committee. And so we did have our directors come together and meet on the February 25th after that board meeting, and we met with our principals and our administrative team meeting the following day. And so we came forward with the following recommendations. And the recommendations are noted on the third blue page. That we revise our school calendars to provide early release dates weekly for all schools, and that we develop a calendar that would allow for time, so it would not be once per month, that for horizontal articulation, vertical articulation, professional development at the district level, professional development at the site level, and grade level and subject level articulation at the site level. Those were all areas of priority that we need to continue to focus on. And we did already purchase the book Focus for all of our staff members. The third area was to look at mathematics, and we did submit a survey out for our K eight teachers. We would also like to bring our secondary, seventh through twelve teachers together in the areas of mathematics to talk about the essentials for their subject content areas. And then we have identified May 28th through 31st, high school library from eight to three. We will be spending time looking at the standards for each grade level in English language arts. The idea would be that we would have one rep per grade level from each elementary school, and so that would be forty-two people to start with. Then we would have two reps per grade level from the secondary, seventh through twelve. So we'll have a committee of probably a little over fifty people to come together by grade levels. They will be looking at, and there's a list here, the chapter two of the smoker book, which talks a lot about why we identify essential standards. And they'll spend most of that time initially looking at what are the absolute essential standards that we want every student to learn. Part of that process over those four days, depending on how far we get, we need to define what mastery looks like for those standards explicitly. What does it look like at your grade level for a student to demonstrate mastery? What is the time that will be needed to teach you to those to mastery and then continue to refine, so that we only have enough standards that we can actually do? Then we would align those vertically, paste them within nine week blocks, and begin to discuss resources. So it's, it's pretty well backed out, not sure how far we will get in that four days. And then the intent would be that at some point, we would have a one-page for every grade level in English language arts that we could publish to parents and community. This is what we guarantee you that your child will learn in this right level. There was some concern raised about the timeline. I know that we've looked at the elementary summer school start date, moving to June 3rd, so that that would not impact elementary. Unfortunately, I don't think we can delay this high school because of the number of hours they have to have, so that should allow that most teachers who watch the pages do so. In addition, in the business, we have a business update this month, and we did provide for the board, and it's available for the public in the packet, the most recent attorney general report on our district's fiscal status. And we again have personnel and technology and special services updates as well.
I would like to thank all of you and anyone who watches this video. If you came to one of those sessions at your school and, and the board was there and you gave your input, that was really one of the most powerful and informative things I've ever participated in all of my years in the district. And I thank those of you who showed up, that, that sort of, it was a game changer for our district and put us on a really good path. So thank you very much, and thank you, Mrs. Asay, and the administrative team for taking over. I'm surprised that you, you, you got a plan so quickly. There's a lot to get done. It's our fault. You, you've got it going.
It was a team.
So any governing board members, any questions, comments? No?
Are you asking for things for future meetings or not at this time?
No, you have something for future agendas, certainly, the topic.
I just, and I think it is going to be on next month's agenda, but I wanted to make sure that Jump Start gets a second chance. And then I would also like to revisit the dress code next month. Just as a review, it's a policy that's been brand-new this year.
Just as a review, it's a policy that's been brand new this year. And so I think we should take a second look at that as well.
Well, we would do it anyway when the student, when the handbook comes up and we approve it, always, dress code always comes up. What month do you submit that handbook for approval?
I think we have the elementary coming in April, is that correct? And then the secondary in, in May. But we also have work policies, so we probably should look at our policy and revisit that as opposed to building a design book item. And then the Jump Start standards are planned to come back, or at least the standards for that class will be coming back for April. We're still working on that. I would like, if I may, since we're talking about items, I would like to mention that for the board meeting, we will be bringing back the calendars to, for the change in calendars to go to the weekly early release. So that will be coming back in April. And then this is something that just came up and I do want to mention it because it will be on the agenda next time. Is when we, although we had it in discussion when we talked about our Ora Grande Classical Academy, now that it's going to go K six, we didn't officially change the name. We were calling it La Cabeza Classical Academy at Ora Grande. So we'll have an action item to change the name because that way we can apply the state for an actual change.
I would like to remind everyone that March is the last time we will have a regularly scheduled work session on the seventh Tuesday of the month. And starting in April, we will no longer have the work session. But of course, on the third, we'll have the regular board meeting, just so you don't show up. I want you, here I am. So, here we are, do I have a?
Actually, please say one more thing.
Yes.
I brought a stack of my cards with my email address on them. So if you have something that you would like to say, but you can't always make these meetings, or if you know a parent or a student or a teacher who has something to say about anything that's been going on, I have plenty of these, I have more cards than I have people that I know. So you're welcome to take a card, I'll just leave them up here.
Thank you, thank you. And now we have a second call to the public. You're not the public, you're communications, you're the next agenda item. Call to the public? No, no, okay then, Mrs. Ash.
I just have a couple of questions. Can the videotapes be released to the newspaper or at least allow me to view them?
No, the security. What videotapes are we talking?
We're handing them.
No, those are big ones.
No.
No, no.
When did you bring them released to the newspaper?
Well, if some security thing happens, can I view them?
That won't get my vote, but when you ask, then you.
Correct. And there's no work session in April to discuss the march method?
There, there may be a specially scheduled work session, I would like that, I would announce that.
Not, not on the regularly scheduled, but there may be. Thank you. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Seconded. Martha Jen.
Archiana Elliar?
Yes.
Lisa Romano?
Yeah.
Nicole Cohen, yes. John Maston?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
And just so you know, that is not the correct time.
We have.